Okay folks, we'll call the meeting to order. And can everybody here back there? You okay?
Yes.
If you can't, let us know and we'll try and bring you up closer to the front. So Sarah, you got the sounds all working okay for you?
Yeah.
Well, thanks very much. I'm not sure if you're here for the meeting or you're here for the air conditioning, but hopefully you're here for a little bit of both. Welcome, everybody. We appreciate you coming out to our meeting tonight. And I'd like to start with the Aboriginal acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the land of which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Tenaha, Siliks and Seneks peoples, and is home to many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honor their connection to the land and rivers and respect the importance of the environment to our strengths as a community. And with that, I'd like to know if there are any lead items for this open meeting? Don't see any. So I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Councillor Charwood, Councillor Woodward, second. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Carrie, thanks very much. So at this part of the meeting, on the committee of the whole meeting, we have fifteen minutes approximately for public participation. And if there's anybody in the audience wishes to speak to council in a general nature, we're not going to engage in back and forth, but if there's something you need to speak to staff with, then we hope you'll be able to direct you there. And you have three minutes to speak, and you're welcome to come up to that chair, introduce yourself, let us know where you live in town, and give us your information that you want to put forward to council, please. Do you have anybody? Okay, come on. Welcome.
Thank you, worship councillors. Good evening.
Now, so pull the mic round beside you there, because these things are pretty finicky.
Yes, there we go. Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Yasenchuk. I am a resident and homeowner in Upper Fairview for the last thirteen years, in which time I'm absolutely grateful for the opportunity to address the council. My concern is the safety one for the citizens of that area, particular students, my own children, and seniors who use this corridor. The corridor I'm speaking of is, well, actually, I'm asking for consideration for the extension of the sidewalk on the west side of Davie Street. It's in mid-block between Sixth and Seventh. On that block up to LVR, there are no sidewalks on either side. It's a bustling corridor, five days a week, Monday to Friday, twice a day. There are six SD eight school buses that go up that corridor. It's an artery for BC Transit. There's traffic for LVR for staff and student parking. There is the early care learning center, which brings lots of traffic in the morning, not to mention Mountain Lakes, Nelson Community Christian School on the Tenth Street campus of Selkirk. Those are busy times, happening twice a day, five days a week. As a homeowner, I've witnessed, I can count on five separate occasions where I've seen seniors having to dodge cars, speeding up the road because there's no sidewalk, walking dogs. I've seen an elderly person dodge a snowplow in the wintertime, trying to navigate down there, that particular section of the road. I myself have had to throw my dog on the side of the road as I jumped off onto the curb to avoid a car speeding through there. And I guess what I'm asking for is consideration for that sidewalk to be completed from the mid-block of Sixth and Seventh up to Eighth Street, so that there is a walking pedestrian corridor that exists. I also see students who go down to Hume School as well having required to walk on the street for that part of the block unnecessarily during the busy times when there are buses and there's lots of extra traffic. That's all I really wanted to say was just for consideration for safety for that part of the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, Jeff. So Sarah's got a note of that, and we'll bring it to the attention of Public Works and we'll see where it fits in with her.
Of course.
We're in the midst of a pretty robust plan right now of doing sidewalks for active transportation, and we'll see where that fits in in the scheme of things, and we'll get back to you and let you know. If it's on the agenda for the next year or so, then we'll let you know.
Absolutely. I appreciate the consideration.
Thanks very much for that.
Thank you very much.
Be nice to that dog. Don't throw him out in front of any horses.
The big dog? You have a big dog?
Yeah.
It's a lot of lifting, yeah.
The bus is coming up.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for, thank you, Jeff. All right, anybody else?
Hello.
Welcome. Just give us your name and let us know where you live and...
My name's Kara Petrowski, and I live at 601 Houston Street.
Is that Karen?
Kara.
Kara?
Yes.
Thanks, Kara.
So I just wanted to bring up that I had a tree removed from my property without any notification. They came the day before. Less than twenty-four hours' notice telling me that my tree was on the chopping block, so to speak, and that it was interfering with power lines, and that they were tired of pruning it. So my problem with that is that they came the very next morning and they removed the tree without any discussion. There was no option for us to prune the tree or take care of it in any way. So now there is no shade, there's no privacy, now our utility bills will go up. It has also decreased the value of our home because it was the only shade provided there. And this tree has been there, I couldn't say. It was a big, beautiful walnut tree. There was nothing wrong with it. It was, it could have been maintained. My partner, when we found out that it was on the chopping block, he went and trimmed it back so that it wasn't by the power lines to show that we could maintain it, and that wasn't an option to keep the tree. And we're just hoping for some kind of understanding as to why it got removed when there's tons of trees in town that also are touching power lines, pardon me, more so than the one that we had. And ours could have been maintained, it wasn't even an issue. And the fellow that came was less than professional. So...
Councillor Renwick?
Is this tree on your property?
It is. Honestly, that was the other point that I wanted to make is that it's questionable whether or not it's ours or city's. It's exactly right in a spot that it could technically be part of ours as well. There was no time to get into looking and to see whether or not we should be maintaining, like, the top of the tree, which we would have happily done so, but it wasn't given, we were not given an option. It just was there one day and gone the next.
So Kara, we'll make sure that we get Nelson Hydro be in touch with you again?
Yes.
Just to clear this all up, because we're kind of in the dark on that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I just, I just wanted to point that out, that there are other trees in town that are more of a concern, and we've had neighbors mention that they've even called, like, dead trees that could have been removed. This is a perfectly healthy tree. There's, there was no discussion. So it's a, and it's a concern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Obviously, address again?
601 Houston Street.
601.
Mm-hmm. It's the corner of Josephine in Houston.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I live up near you there, so I'll be careful not to drive by your house for the next week or so.
It looks pretty sad, I'm not gonna lie.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Anybody else wishing to speak? Now is your chance, if you wish. Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, and thanks to both of you for coming up and letting us know your challenges that you have and suggestions for us as well. So we'll be back to you as soon as possible. Okay. First item on the agenda is Regional District, RDCK, Nelson District Rec Commission. And Joe, you've got the floor here, my friend. Come on up, let us know who you are, and you have your presentation in front of council. And we look forward to hearing from you. Come on up. Is Marty with you?
Yes.
Yeah. Marty, I hope you brought your own chair, did you? Good. Thank you. And when you want to speak, please get close to that microphone, it's not the best one in the world, so...
No problem, thank you. I don't think I've ever been told that I can't be heard, so we'll go with that. So thank you for the time. What we want to go through with you, go over with you tonight, is just the reorganization that we've done in community services, and how that impacts our operations in Nelson, and what the intent of that change is for our operations. So up on the screen here, tell me, it looks pretty small, so I was gonna make this bigger. Assume that it's small for you as well. Does that, does that help at all?
That's a bit better, yes.
All right.
Hey, Justin, can you pull that TV round there? Can you let them pivot a little bit so they vote, no, towards the audience if possible? I don't know if it... Thanks very much. It's not that easy to see, but hopefully you'll be able to...
Yeah, so perfect. So for everyone, sometimes community services can be kind of a difficult title for our, for our department. It doesn't necessarily say exactly what we are, but we're essentially recreation and parks. And in particular, this regional district is unique in the province in that all of the major recreational facilities in the regional district are run by the regional district of Central Cootney. So that means our Nelson and District Community Complex, our Casa Garin District Community Complex, Crescent and District Community Complex, and we also have smaller centers in Salmo and in New Denver, and a recreation service in the valley. So those are our primary staffed recreation services, and then we have many volunteer services as well, including a volunteer fitness service in New Denver. And when these things go sideways, it can cause, cause a lot of problems. But what we are primarily doing is, the regional district is typically organized its services location-based. And so if you know our regional district, one of the things that we need to do is we need to account for our services separately. But we also, from the beginning of the regional district, also managed those services separately. And they were managed and sometimes managed very differently, even though they were for the same organization. So, so what we are trying to do with this reorganization is change that management structure, so that it's not a location-based management structure, it is now an organizational-based management structure. And in particular, we want to emphasize the two primary areas of our, of our work with our communities. The first being asset management and consistent day-to-day operation of our facilities. So that is one primary area of focus. The other primary area of focus is future planning and service delivery to our residents. And I'll explain and show you who's doing that work now, and how that structure will impact, in particular, Nelson. So on the slide that you can, excuse me, on the slide that you can see, the general manager of community services is myself, Joe Carrico. We have two of our managers of recreation, that's what they were formerly called in each of our major centers, and they've taken on new responsibilities. So Marty Benson, who was formerly our manager of recreation in Nelson and District, is our regional manager of recreation and client services. So that's primarily our planning and our client delivery services, in particular, our programming services. So really, our programming services are how our community engages with the facilities that we have. The other, our other regional manager, you'll be probably recognize the name, is Craig Stanley. So Craig was formerly our regional, our recreation manager in Creston, and he is now our regional manager of operations and asset management. Now just quickly go over this page here. So you can see that we have a commission in Rec number six, we have some, Rhindell Commission of Management, so we actually do have, I skipped Rhindell, but that's actually probably our fourth biggest cluster of facilities in the regional district. And our, lots of our commissions, all their governance pieces fall to me. So primarily governance-related items are gonna come to myself and the two regional, regional managers. This is a scroll. All right. Don't think I went too far, page two. So our regional manager of recreation and client services. So this is our side. What we're gonna talk about first is our programming side. So the one thing in the regional district that we've done is that oftentimes, because we were location-based, instead of thinking of programming, much of our programming is similar. So we can, in lots of ways, replicate what we do in one place and do that in another, or it's not even a matter of replicating, it's just really that the service is the same. So in particular, aquatics falls really easy in a description of this, in that we deliver Red Cross swim lessons across all of our pools. So we don't actually need three people organizing the same set of programming. We can do that in a coordinated fashion. So that's an easy description of it, but in particular, it's about looking forward. Our communities are changing, and lots of what they're looking for from recreation is, is different now than it was in the past. So in the past, as you know, almost every single one of our major complexes was developed with an arena first, and then a pool, and then fitness. And in fact, what actually drives our business inside our facilities right now is actually our pool and our fitness. Those are the primary places that we interact with the public. But the other piece that's really developing now is outdoor recreation. And in fact, if we've recently done four master plans, Nelson being the oldest actually now, which most of its information comes from 2012, but almost every community points, looks outdoors, and is looking for more outdoor experience. So whenever we've expanded or looked at doing different programming areas, we've often duplicated them, had to create it in Casa Garin, had to create it in Nelson, and created in Creston. So now what we're saying is, no, our regional programming team, our regional programmers, A, a good programmer can program anything, and, and B, they can program across a broader spectrum of services. So our regional programming team, where we had, I think, nine programmers in total, we're down to a team of five. One is, we call this a programming supervisor and community development backslash, and that's Tia Whaling. And Tia is actually a former recreation coordinator in Creston. So she's gonna be the manager of that team, under Marty's managerial oversight. In that team is Jody Vowsden. Jody served many different places. In fact, she's probably moved around the district the most and filled the, kind of put out the most fires for me, but she's gonna be our, one of our regional programmers. You're gonna really notice a Nelson flavor here. Amanda Beavers is gonna be one of our regional programmers, and Ann Gillander. So all three of those people come from our Nelson facility, and it's probably not surprising. Our Nelson facility is the busiest and probably creates the most programs per capita of any department that we have. So there's a lot of capacity in those programmers to think a little bit bigger and think a little bit broader. The other programmer on this team is Jesse Bourgeois, and Jesse is from Creston, and he brings a very unique flavor. He's more of a fitness flavor, but in particular, he has got a little bit of a, of a brain for organizing things. So we think that that's a very strong team to move our regional programming together. And I said that this is our planning group as well. So we have Mark Crowe, who's been with us for, been with the regional district for a while. He started in our programming department and moved into our parks programming, but he's, eventually that role we think is gonna expand. What you're really gonna see is Mark, Mark is probably our expert on our master plans, and also on our larger scope planning. So Mark, eventually, we can see that role is gonna evolve beyond parks, just parks planning, into more recreational planning. Our communications and community engagement, right now, that role is vacant. That role was filled by Maria Hyponen, she's gone on to take on some different challenges, but we are just, in fact, that posting closes on August 2nd, so we're gonna be refilling that, refilling that role. So, and in those two roles, the communication, community engagement, and program supervisor, community development, you can get a sense of the flavor of where we're trying to go. And in particular, it's into really using those master plans and moving our programming in that direction that our communities want. So the community development piece is in particular around inclusivity, how we make sure that we don't, in particular, leave any of our residents behind, that we have services for everyone, in particular, when it comes to financial ability to participate. So that is, that isn't Tia's ballpark right now. The communications, community engagement, I think there's a natural synergy there. Community engagement, in particular, being about how we keep those master plans alive. So in particular, you can see that I know that Keith, as our, sorry, Councillor Page, as our Chair for the Nelson District Rec Commission, we've often talked about how the survey information we have is from a decade ago now. So how do we keep that current? And so that's partly what that community engagement piece is. Any questions to this point? All right? Oh, sorry, I don't wanna skip over Rebecca, but she comes up here. Our rural and outdoor supervisor, rural programmer, again, that's that rural programming piece. Rebecca Scheller, again, that's another, one of our other Nelson employees who's gonna take that on. In particular, right now, that's about working with our, our rural programming that we have. That's primarily through Salmo and our Slow Can services, but we have other services like Recreation Number 10, Recreation Commission Number Two, Number Four, which is in the Cusp and Area K. So we have all of these connections, and Rebecca eventually will take on all of those portfolios. Right now, she's really concentrating on learning what's happening in Salmo and what's happening in Slow Can. Now, this is the side of the organization that will maybe look the most familiar, but be different. So Craig Stanley has four managers reporting into, into that role. Kerry Gaynor, Kerry's been with us now for a decade, he's our regional parks manager. And then we have three new, new but old roles. Specifically, we used to combine governance and strategic planning and managing a facility into one role that didn't work very well. Our facilities are big, and they really require great, very, a much more robust oversight of day-to-day operations. So we're separating that piece out, to where Craig and Marty and myself were the strategic thinkers, and the strategies is on our side, and the facility managers are more about their day-to-day operation. So in Nelson, just as in everywhere, the actual winner, the person who will take, who is the facility manager, is Vanessa Bludoff. But just as in life, she's going on a medical leave. Vanessa is expecting her first child here very shortly, and Ryan Rickleton will be filling in for Vanessa while she's on maternity leave. In Creston, Stuart Durning, who was a longtime employee there, will be the facility manager in Creston. And Jim Crockett, who is our, who was our, was our recreation manager, he is moving into being the assistant regional manager for operations and asset management and our facility manager in Casa Garin. And what I'm gonna do here, in particular, we have slides on how each of the centers breaks down, but I'm gonna concentrate on the Nelson facility. So I may skip a few side slides here. Casa Garin, Nelson, perfect. All right, so I'm gonna move this around a little bit, but we'll start at, start at this level. So each of the centers is very similar in its structure. Nelson is slightly different, and I'll just tell you where it is. And it's really here in our recreation services supervisor, and our junior, what we call a junior program. This role right now is vacant. But in the other facilities, that's a combined role, and the reason for that is that in Nelson, again, our facility is busier here. And just to give you an order of scale, Nelson and Crest, or sorry, Casa Garin and Creston combined don't get the same number of visits as our Nelson facility. And so that's just that scale of operation. So as the visits go up, that means the number of employees go up, and the number of services offered is greater. So we've, that is where there's a natural progress, or how we can separate out that busyness. And those other centers, as they get busier, which we hope they will, that will be where we can expand. So here, a recreation services supervisor is Tyler, I'm not gonna try and say Tyler's last name, because I'm gonna say it incorrectly, but Tyler's been with us for just over a year, but he's proved, proven to be a very organized programmer. So he started as our junior programmer, he is now taking on this role. And so in particular, what he's supervising are our arena programs, our head fitness, and our head lifeguard. So those are the, Tyler's main role is that day-to-day operation, making sure that we have lifeguards, making sure we have fit techs on the floor, and those kinds of pieces. Rick, sorry.
Yeah, Joe, thanks for that. Just really quick clarification. The programmers seem to be, I'm confused at how the programmers, including lifeguards, fit underneath the facility management and not underneath Marty. Isn't he the...
Yeah, so the instructors are the deliverers of the programs, they're not necessarily the creators. So the rec, how that works together, the simplest way of saying it, which is more complicated than what it sounds, but an instructor is a resource, no different than the pool is a resource. So what the programmer needs to know is that they have the resource available. The, the programs that they put together are gonna be supervised in each facility by the recreation services supervisor and that structure, and that's actually not that different than the way it is now. It's just that you have the programmer, you have a programmer in each facility, and then you have these exact same roles that are there making sure that that work gets done. So part of what we know is that some of our roles were maybe not fulfilling the whole intent of their job, and this structure will make that full intent come true. So a head lifeguard will be responsible for making sure that that program delivery takes place. So one of the primary responsibilities of the rec supervisor and the programming team is making sure they know what the resources are that are available. And it's a great question, because one of the other pieces, and as you're aware, we have a lack of lifeguards right now. So one of the other main areas of that recreational programming team is looking at where are those resources, where are they lacking, and what are the training programs that need to be developed to do that? So in particular, in the regional district, and this, maybe I'll sound a little bit frustrated here, but it's always been a little bit of a frustration, is that we don't do coordinated training. Even though we try, and we have tried to do coordinated training, it just never really comes together when you have three, three bodies that are really only concerned about the supply of their staff. So this, we're broken that, we've broken that connection and said it's really about a regional district supply of lifeguards or any of those kinds of pieces. So that's what this will be doing. So there's gonna be more, you will see more strategic development of training programs like lifeguards. And in particular, in Nelson, we don't have the issue of not enough fitness instructors, but in our other two centers, we have a lack of fitness instructors. So we're gonna try and build on those successes and bridge it out across everyone. Sorry, does that answer?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just gonna slide across over here. And you'll see this in our other areas, the operations supervisor, that's Rob Trininko. This is the exact same structure in in all of our centers. So the op supervisor is responsible for all our physical plant operations, our custodial operations. Uh for our maintenance of equipment and for um helping organize uh that work. And this is in particular, one area where we think that there's synergies across the district. Um we have three, we actually have, uh the regional district owns. Six, six refrigeration operation plants, like chillers and that kind of stuff and so. Um but you know, as a, two of our centers use one type of software to control. Their uh their chillers and another uses a different type of like, th- these are all inefficiencies in the system that eventually. Um cause issues and so those are the kinds of things that we're looking at standardizing. The other piece of the operation that looks exactly the same going down the crest and just trying to find. Think I gotta go left, there it is, is our customer service team. So this is where that similar type of an arrangement works. On our planning side and our client services side is that that side of the. Operation is gonna develop those policies and procedures that this team will follow. But because they work in their day to day operators, they're supervised by the facility manager. So that that's where that intricacies and lots of times we show this in this old style of an organizational chart. But these are really going back and forth like this. And so this team is our front desk staff and we have these in all of our centers. We even have them in some of our rural places, but in particular, we think this is another area where we can find synergies. Um in particular, our belief is that you should be able to register for a program wherever it exists across. Across the regional district at any one of our centers. So these teams eventually we be will be developed into regional, into really a regional district customer service team. Some people will be there, still need to be there at the front desk to take day to day admissions. But region really, you can register for a program anywhere. And in fact, you can do that right now through our software. Uh but we're gonna more formalize how the how telephone registration and all those kinds of pieces work. So that's a real high level look at this. Again, it uh this breaks out into uh really in the community services, there's about three hundred employees. So that's uh how big this scope is. Um but we've tried to break it down into more functional units versus location units. And we do believe that what will happen is that as we develop new function, new opportunities. Instead of duplicating those up those um structures to develop programs in three places. We'll be do- doing that as more as a regional district, so that will that cost won't be duplicated. It should be just increased once. Go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. Uh do your, see the chart here, you do your supervisors. Uh interact.
Yes.
So that do they have like, hey, what are you doing over in Creston and sharing ideas?
There's um, it's a great question. This is what one of the things. So I gotta admit that at this structure I've been working on for about a decade. But you always need those little crises that set things in motion and uh believe it or not, this is one of the good things for us from COVID. Um so it's a great question, cause what we did during COVID, in order to manage. We all of a sudden had to become much more coordinated because we needed to deal in the exact same way. With our response to COVID, so we created something called Communities of Practice during COVID. And so those communities of practice revolved around uh s- some things were around programming areas. Other things were around functional areas. So yes, so the recreation supervisors, there's three of them in this in the entire model. And they will be, they will form um one of their own communities of practice in order to learn from each other. So yes, that is one of the things that we bring forward from COVID.
Supplemental?
Yeah.
Are you sharing in like a infrastructure or are you sharing equipment, are you sharing software?
Yeah, absolutely, so uh uh we're. Our our new software is called Perfect Mind, there's a little bit of a joke about whether it's so perfect, but um yeah, we share all of those same. Those same pieces, so all of that, how we're doing lots of our work is exactly the same. You know, and and what you get when you develop, as an organization, we develop location, 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 location. Is that people really want to hold on to their uniqueness. And but what COVID enabled us to do because we were um working so collaboratively together. Is that people start to realize, oh, this isn't so, I'm not so unique. Um I that there are definitely tweaks, like every facility is a little bit different, so what you might be able to offer is different. But I can see now how I can think more broadly across the district versus thinking that. There's only this uniqueness. The one thing that I do wanna point out though is that each of our teams is made up of people from all around the district. So um for example, the um regional programming team, the intent is not to create. An office where all of these people are working together. They're still working out of their remote locations, they will of course get together to meet. But we also know that through COVID, that we have technological solutions to how uh they can meet on a more regular basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lockenberger.
Joe, um one of the concerns I think some people might have is is around governance, that we have three separate services. Each one having their own commission, it's supposed to, you know, set strategy, make uh budgetary decisions. This seems to run fly in the face of that or conflict with that, how do you plan to deal with that challenge?
Yeah, actually, you know, and this is that uniqueness piece, um each commission thinks they're unique, but they're actually running the exact same programs. That's like you, you know, uh so they have like, a- again, like fundamentally, our services are built around our. Largest assets, which are indoor facilities, so there are an arena, there are a pool and there are a fitness center. Um so there may be a new resource added to a center. Um says let's let's say for example, geez, I've gotta be careful about what examples I use here. Um let's just say there's a new recreational opportunity called B, I don't know what it is, it could be anything.
VR VR gaming.
That's right, VR, sure, we'll go VR gaming. And we have a virtual, actually, we do actually have a virtual reality room in our Ryan Dale Center. Um but uh we have that new opportunity and that exists in one of our centers. So obviously, that's a strategic priority of that commission or that area to to offer that. To create that area for that to be done in, but that doesn't mean mean that it needs to be programmed individually. A programmer, a good programmer just needs to know that that opportunity exists. And once it exists, they know that they can offer something. You know, and and that's the same whether it be the development of uh Morning Mountain into how it's changed over the last number of years. So those opportunities didn't exist before, they now exist, now I can program it. So that's how, that's how we'll, that's how we'll manage that. You know, and that's partly what all recreation is about, the all recreation committee. You know, so for example, in the regional district now, we don't have uh five different policies and how we set fees, we have one. And we're working on getting those fees to that point. Because the other thing that we also realize as an organization is we're being played against ourself internally, which is a really. Odd thing to say, but one junior team plays us against another, but another junior team is getting versus another junior team and you eventually erase. You race to the bottom. Um what's interesting is across the province right now is that there, I know, I just finished. Answering uh doing a ba- answering somebody else's questions about hiring a consultant to set a fees and charges policy. Colona, um I'm in constant contact with Colona right now because they're doing the same policy work that we did. And they're using that as a model, so that's the, that's where we think that we can go. Um the one thing that we don't have in the province is we don't have another regional district to look to. We have, there's some regional districts that operate facilities, but they're not um like this regional district, which offers. Really all of the facilities plus a large regional park net- network.
Thank you, Joe, thanks very much. And while we have you here tonight, there's a number of people around town wanna hang somebody because Cairo Park's not open. And here's an opportunity for you to explain.
Yeah.
Why Cairo Park Pool is not open.
Yeah, so uh the the explanation re- really is just. So in Nelson and area, we have our primary center, which is our, which is the NDCC. Aquatic Center, then in the summer, we have an expanded service. Right now, we don't have enough lifeguards to offer the core service, which is the NDCC. We don't have the expanded service, where we used to get the expanded service from was from lifeguards returning back into the community. So the the ironic part is that like gyro right now is the focus of consternation. The real issue is coming in the fall. And the fall for all three centers is when we lose our lifeguards that are returning to school. So our operations were already, and sorry Gabriel, I do not know what I just did, I must have hit. Oh, you did that, okay, perfect. Uh but come to the fall, um we may see our aquatic hours in the NDCC drop. Um because of the fact that we don't, we've lost that pool of lifeguards. Um so we're really working hard in all of our centers to increase our lifeguarding pool. But I know that we have that risk and in fact Creston has been our uh facility that's uh unfortunately suffered the most. Um I think even right now, we're only open five days a week in Creston. We're not open on Sunday and Monday, so I think that's right. We're not open on Sunday and Monday in Creston and our aquatic center because of the lack of lifeguards. So um that's our real problem is the fall.
Go ahead, Councilor Woodward.
Just to expand on that, that is because when the pandemic happened, that lifeguard training program was interrupted.
Correct.
And then the it's um people aren't, so we have a gap basically of trained of not have of of not having trained lifeguards.
You know, I think it's 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 a little more complicated than just COVID and I think, you know, I was even. Reading this just about generally in the job market like, cause there's a lack of human resources across almost all sectors. And um the I think what they're looking at now, that the primary issue is aging out. Um uh is is actually the bubble that we've all been told is coming. And that is that there's gonna be more retirees and people that are able to enter into the workforce. And so that is actually the primary issue and how that impacts lifeguarding is that lifeguarding used to be. Um for a young, in particular for a young person, but we can't forget that we're. Where we're really short is in experienced guards. People choosing to make it a little bit more of a career than just a student kind of a job. Um and that. Certain, you know, with minimum, and I not not blaming minimum wage, but with minimum wage coming up. Other roles, like you know, you can get practically get a job washing dishes for the same amount that we pay for a lifeguard. Which used to have about a four to five dollar an hour gap. And a lifeguard is a trained position. Number one is you gotta be able to, not just to swim, you can't doggy battle, you've gotta be able to do it well. And then you have all the lifesaving training that goes around it. And that is a big barrier, just to end, that was already the barrier to entry. Um I used to say that lifeguards, if I if I go back through the lifeguards that I've. They're doctors, they're physiotherapists, uh they're in the health field. Um they are very motivated, they were the motivated students and the motivated um young people that were coming into that. And that not only did that training stop, but like the competitive, the the swimming, uh that whole piece stopped for a while. So because primarily we would get lifeguards from, they would be not only the motivated swimmer in a swim club. But they would also be the academically gifted kid in the swim club, that would become the life, that would become the lifeguard. So those are the pieces that were missing, so I think it's easy to blame the pandemic, but there's a whole bunch of other things that are influencing that right now as well.
Joe, just for information, it took my wife years to train me to wash dishes.
Sorry, I've seen you before. I can understand that.
And so, Joe, on that note, and I know we've got to wrap up here, cause we've got a couple of other presentations, but on that note. Um what's the sort of strategy for going forward?
Yeah, so right right now, you know, in all of our centers, we we're very aggressively running lifeguarding programs. They, one of the things that we've changed our focus on, lifeguarding programming, we used to look at it as programming. There was never a shortage, it it was an abundant supply. And so we had an abundance of people willing to take the course and that. Well, what we're doing now is that we're running those courses, whether they financially break even or not. We're running them as training programs and what we're seeing across the province is that that's the way they're being run now. That they're not being run as um as a revenue generator, they're being run as we need. They're training and we need them, so they'll be more run as internal training versus external.
Confidence those folks would actually show up when you need them as an example next summer?
Yeah, is it gonna, is it gonna be fixed by next summer, I don't know. You know, I know that a lot of the people that are run coming through right now are very young. Um so like the lifeguard path to lifeguarding, you start before you're actually even eligible, the lifeguard. Um so one of the things that has happened through the pandemic is that we've created a position called an assistant lifeguard. So that is somebody, but what an assistant lifeguard can't do is they 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 cannot be the only one on deck. They're not allowed to be the only person, we need to have qualified National Lifeguard Service. A lifeguard with them, the 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 assistant is real, it means only there to assist.
Joe, Marty, thanks very much for your presentation.
No, and thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. See you tomorrow morning.
See you tomorrow morning.
Okay, and next up, we have a presentation and for Cottonwood Falls Improvement in the park. And uh we have at least two people coming to the front for that one. Welcome, gentlemen, introduce yourselves and your program and you've got the floor.
Well, thank you very much for um including us tonight, my name's John Armstrong, I'm the president of the Nelson Izushe Friendship Society. The support group for our sister city relationship.
And I'm Bernie Zimmer, I'm the uh gar- uh garden uh committee chair for the Nelson Izushe Society.
And joining us tonight also is Will Taylor, our designer and uh website manager here. And in the back, Grace Devoe, our vice president and our visionary Jim Sawada are also joining us tonight. So um uh we we as the Friendship Society um. Looks after the Friendship Garden in Cottonwood Falls Park and contributes to the development of the park. And uh we're lucky, we get to spend a lot of time down there. And we have a number of projects going on this year and we just wanted to uh bring you up to date on what we're doing. And we thought the best way to do that was with a slideshow. Um the slideshow um will run for six and a half minutes, so you know there's an end coming. And uh after uh that, we'll have time for uh any questions you have or a little bit more information. And I think Sarah's ready to start.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so um do we get the full screen? Yeah, okay, good, so um um Nelson's Sister City Relationship with Izushe was formed in nineteen eighty seven. As was the Friendship Society, so this year marks our thirty fifth anniversary. And normally, we might have an exchange, but not this year. We created the Friendship Garden in two thousand and three to honor that global friendship and as you can see, it's a.
We created the Friendship Garden in two thousand and three to honor that global friendship. And as you can see, it's a park for all seasons. Bernie.
We um started working on the waterfall viewpoint a couple of years ago. Last year, we uh finally got the uh permanent railings put up with a temporary insert. Those will have uh some art in artwork to come, thanks to Joy Barrett. Um we've had a variety of things, a pruning workshop with Hiro Okusa, who was the original designer of the garden. And he often comes to help us prune. This was our workshop this year.
Where where'd he come from, Bernie?
From Vancouver.
He's been coming for many years, and this was the first time we did a workshop. So just a few weeks later, in in the beginning of May, the cherry blossoms were blooming, and we were able to have a cherry blossom viewing for the first time in um three years. A lot of people came out, I think just the and the blossoms were just so beautiful this year. And we did haiku like this one um and hung them in the trees, and people kept coming around and and reading them and enjoying them. And the the blossoms lasted a long time. So um spring is a uh good time for planting. And last year, we did uh new bamboo azaleas, um rhododendrons. But you'll notice also, if you look closely, there's a lot of weeds in here. And uh we hadn't really tended to the detailed uh of the garden in in a long time. So we created a Weedy Wednesday program. And so we've had volunteers coming to the garden for the last year and a half. Weeding. And and you can see the difference now. We have bark mulch, uh we have tended beds. Um uh we have new plantings and the everything looks looked after. It really uh has made a difference. I think we we get to uh the the people who come to weed, um here's a few of them. Um they not only come on Wednesdays now, they'll come every other day. One one person has been there three days this week already. Um and and we've created a a group of people who are committed to uh looking after the garden. It's really valuable.
Must be the weed.
Must, yeah, maybe. Different kind, different guy to weed.
That's why they're just sort of showing up.
The waterfall, um we can't take credit for, but it's really beautiful. And it provides uh non-stop showers in the spring on the west side there. The uh thanks to Adrian Hoover, the Market Oval Stone Wall was finished this spring. It goes halfway around the oval. It's for for sitting on and also to serve as a retaining wall. We're hoping to plant uh some cherry and maple trees up above and some uh other plants. This this structure you might recognize, uh this is the gate from the former Busaba Thai Restaurant. And the owners gave it to us after the the building burned, so we found a nice spot for it. Uh Canada Day, we we were really happy to come back again. We had lots of uh interest, calligraphy, origami, um and other programs. Um very successful. Um so we're back to the Friendship Garden. And this is, these were last year's pictures, but this is where we are at now. The hydrangeas are just starting to bloom, the daylilies are blooming, the cosmos are coming out. And um it's really uh just a a beautiful place to be in the summer. And it's also the coolest place in the whole city it right now. It's just wonderful. So you know. Well worth going. Bernie, are we over to you? Not quite.
Well, of course, when you have volunteers coming up, we need tools uh for them. We've been using our own tools, John or myself or Jim. We've come with a bunch of tools and uh you know, have to manage how that goes. So we've uh started building a shed. This is the slab prep for it. And um the the shed will be used for tools. This uh design, this is the design of the shed. Alan MacLeod did the technical work on that. It was a collaboration of Jim, John, myself, and Alan, and Alan put it into a very nice picture there.
This is waterfall access, yeah.
Yeah, so we um created this waterfall access. And this is the rough out of a ramp that goes up to that waterfall access. And the interesting story about that is, we had a meeting with Joy Barrett. She had a a disability consultant, Tanel is her name. Uh she's in a wheelchair. We brought her up to the uh falls and she said, that's the closest she's been to a waterfall since she had her accident. And and she's a very active person. She hikes on trails and whatnot, well, wheels on trails. But uh we have had this vision for getting a an accessible ramp up to that waterfall. And uh when I saw the joy on her face when she was at that point there, uh it really firmed up my resolve to, we gotta get this thing done.
So on, just over here, you'll see our uh one of the signs in our Fortis Award signage project. And um uh with that award and with direction from the city, we've spent the last two and a half years creating ten signs that tell the stories of Cottonwood Creek. And I'm gonna ask Will just to jump in here and and add to this. Will's our designer, and what you see is his work.
Yeah, so I'll be quick. Uh I'm Will Taylor. Um this is the sign showing the changing landscape in the park area. Uh we have a number of different signs. These are sort of examples of them. Uh focusing on the different aspects of this, the ecology, the previous inhabitants, the sister city relationship. And they are almost all done at this point. We're in the final proofing stages. Um we've had content come in from Aboriginal groups, indigenous groups, um and a number of community organizations as well. So um it's a long, ongoing project and happy to answer questions about it after.
The last two here are are bring up the question of the exchange. And will we be having an exchange next year? Depends on the Japanese government. Right now, we can't go in as uh individual travelers. And depends on the comfort people have with hosting visitors. But had lots of inquiries and we are interested. So maybe maybe next year, but more likely twenty twenty-four. And so that brings us to an end. We just want to say thank you to uh to the city, to uh
Our many volunteers.
Many volunteers, the um generous support we've had from suppliers and people who have helped us in different ways, uh the Columbia Basin Trust, the Regional District, and many others. So.
And I must say, it's actually a um working down there. We're all volunteers, but uh and anybody's welcome to come down and help us. But uh it really, you leave there just feeling a great sense of satisfaction. So encourage people to come out and join us.
So do you have any questions for us?
Councilor Woodward.
Well, it's more of a comment. And I just really uh just feel a lot of gratitude for your group taking um that space. And I've witnessed it over last decade or more than a decade. And it's just really blossomed into a very special zone of Nelson. So I know you get a lot of satisfaction from it, but I think a lot of people come there and find a sense of calm and beauty. And you know, the city is growing and can be busy. And it's like, you can go there, have a bite to eat by the waterfall and you're in a totally different zone. So thank you for providing that.
Thank you for for saying that, yeah.
Page and then Councilor Renwick.
Yeah, I agree with everything Counselor Woodward has said. Obviously, you guys put together a great park. My question uh is more about the north face, the north gateway into the park where we traditionally come in off of the parking area since this council had recently provided some direction to to uh improve the car facilities in that area. And I was wondering how much, you guys clearly have a very distinct vision. You've put a lot of time and effort into how that, how these pieces are thought about. And is there other ways? Are there ways we can be elevating our design considerations for how that parking will be improved upon so that it is incorporated in a in a faithfully representative way of of the Friendship Society and the garden design and and what we might see from a Japanese garden of this of this caliber?
Well, I I I think we're happy that uh work is being done in the in the parking, improving the the parking for people coming there. We're also looking forward to improve signage over the years so people know where it is. We've done a new brochure and we we thought we should have put a map on because people don't know where the park is. But gradually, people will. But what we're interested in are pathways and pathways that lead into the park and gradually introduce people to the the fact that they're coming into a park and a and a and a Japanese Friendship Garden. And we've had discussions with with staff about you know, how best to do that. So I think in time, you'll see a gradual um an improved entry, especially for pedestrians and going into the park.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that um uh the city planning department has put a concept together, and we've been in discussion with them. And we had a a very fruitful meeting just a week or so ago. And um yeah, it's very positive from from their end. And we're happy to, you know, be a part of that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Councilor Renwick.
Thank you. Um I was gonna ask about parking too, but that's been taken care of. Uh I just want to say uh thank you to you guys, you and your team for providing and maintaining a spectacular space in our town. And that volunteerism is alive and well in Nelson. And thank God for the volunteers. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. You were mentioning that, yeah. Yeah, I just, I reminded of of a a family came to the park the other day. They were from Manitoba. And uh you know, we we see people, we ask them and where they're from or if they're visitors, and we talk a little bit. And uh they said, you know, we we have nothing like this in Manitoba. This is just amazing. You know, we don't have waterfalls. You have a waterfall right in the middle of the city like this in the garden. It's so beautiful. And so I said, well, um how did you find out about it? Because did you go to the visitor center? Cause the visitor center is really good, and they send people up to us all the time. And these people said, no, we found it on Google and we came here right away. So so people know about it. It's it's uh they're coming.
Excellent. Well, John and Bernie, thanks very much. And Jimmy Sawada is in the back. Back row there. Jimmy, stand up for him. Jimmy, along with John and Bernie and and all the other folks have been just champions of this park back when it was just a pile of rubble. And thanks very much for the good work you're doing. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay. Up next is Shoreline Development, formerly Cootney Landing. Mike, you're up. Come on up, introduce yourself and let us know about your project.
Hey, good evening, Worship Council. Thanks so much for having me. Sarah, I believe it's you and me. Because I don't, like, I've watched all these other people and they can run these PowerPoint presentations, but I don't. But I do fly helicopters. Want to put that out there, so. Just a couple of things before we start. I just would like to get out. Um firstly, we wouldn't be here today, and I don't know how often you hear it, maybe you don't hear it often enough, but uh I simply want to thank Pam Monroe, Natalie, and Sebastian, and the works people. We wouldn't be here today without the help that they have had in digging through this last twenty-two years of land and the stuff that's been going on and cleaning it up and and making it so that we could actually come here today. And I just want to say thank you very much, you guys. It wasn't very long um since we hung our signs on the fence down there to allow our geotechnical people and our environmental people to be able to come to the right site uh to get their works done. When my phone started ringing off the hook and people were finding me from in town, out of town, and out of province uh to find out what's going on. And it became very clear very quickly that um this is a very unique piece property. It's a very unique piece property in the city of Nelson, for the city of Nelson. And it's probably a start again of a refreshing of the waterfront development down there. And so an awful lot of care, attention, and passion have been put into this, getting it here this way. And I just want everyone to know that uh we're all on board and with the staff behind me's help. Uh I think we got a pretty good jump on it. We're certainly open to criticism and flexibility on on things as we go. But we're, we think we have encompassed the community um in all aspects, from families to empty nesters, to weekenders, to seniors. Um and so we've got a bit of that development. I don't know how often you hear developers coming to you and saying that uh we've densified the site instead of asking for more densification because we think it just makes a a better community and a better site down there. So welcome to our project. Shoreline, Nelson B.C. And we're promoting that. Our marketing people have came up. I had to make sure there was a sailboat in there, of course, that was explained to me very early in this development. Sailing is a very passionate sport out here, so. But anyway, um it's Shoreline Nelson B.C. It's not Shoreline by Kulash Development. It's not Shoreline by any, it's Shoreline Nelson, British Columbia. And and that's where we jump off. Amazing picture. I didn't take it. But uh beautiful picture of downtown and the scene. And I think it's from Pulpit Rock. I've never been there, but that's a beautiful incoming uh shot from the helicopter looking down at the city. And it's it's amazing. And that's what we're promoting. The city. It's beautiful. So here we are with our first slide. Uh that's what our landing page on our website's going to be, which none of that has been marketed. It was very important to us that nothing went to the public until we had this meeting here with council tonight and got that input and doing that. Until I got here tonight, and then Joe tells me it's been out on the agenda, and people that may have seen it, I don't know. But we have not advertised, but we will go live depending how tonight goes, uh within the next few weeks. So here's the site plan in front of you here now. Um you will see, and I I have to say, I have bigger uh if. Okay, good start.
Helicopters, huh?
Yeah, I know, exactly. So you can see, starting on the intersection of Lake Shore and Cedar, Cedar Street now is a cul-de-sac um with a emergency access continuing through and a walking path continuing through. You've got uh entrance to the site off of Cedar Street, emergency exit out onto Lake Shore only through the first uh court. And then as you traverse through the site, um you'll come out onto Lakeside Drive at the other end where those, where the condominiums are. Now, we'll be back in front of you uh later this fall, maybe early in January for the development permit for the condominiums. We're only just looking for the development permit for the townhouse section and the garden homes there, okay? Tonight. So that's what we're talking about. But I want to give you an overall view of what the entire site's gonna look like as we move forward. Okay? Do you guys want to ask questions as we go? For sure. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Mike. So through the chair, I'm just curious, um with Cedar Street, will that be like public access? Like, would would a person who's walking down to the waterfront be able to walk through that?
You'll get there's a walking trail. And we'll see it, I think, on our next slides here with the landscaping. And you'll see there, there's a walk-through. So as Simpson Road comes around, there's a, this this is still a connection through here. But it's for bikes and walking and everything else, yeah, yeah. And it's all landscaped through, done. And so, yeah, that's, and so this is the access to the site, the main. Um we'll start with these townhomes. These are We'll start with these townhomes. These are the garden homes and the condominiums will start next year. Yeah.
Thank you.
So Cedar Street will remain a public street?
Public street, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've added a lot more parking in here, which really, I think we had to supply 22 stalls for the marina. But I think we've got about 26 or 27 in here on Cedar Street, public.
We don't, we don't see a continuation of the sidewalk or any kind of pedestrian services. We're dumping them out, just dumping them out on the road until they get to the lake drive.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, yeah, there's on the civil drawings, there's no sidewalk on Cedar Street to Lakeside Drive. The sidewalk's all the way down Lakeside Drive. But we had that choice of either finding parking or sidewalks and no parking, right?
So if I, if I may, just to clarify, so that's a, like, you can't access Cedar Street through, right? Like, it cuts off?
No.
No through access.
Walking and biking.
But it'll have ballards in there for the emergency vehicles to pass through. And it shows a little better on the landscape drawing here.
Okay, yeah.
Right there.
Okay, yeah, that's better.
The same exiting the site, the only exit from the site is off of Cedar, onto Cedar Street or Lakeside Drive up here at this top corner.
Sorry, so just to, so if I may, the, that's not a sidewalk in, the parking doesn't butt against the sidewalk? That's, that's not what that is?
There's no sidewalk proposed on Cedar Street as we sit here today. We put in this parking and, yeah.
Okay, and so then what's the green that, so on the diagonal parking?
So, over here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the YVR, YVR site and the angle parking and this is, this is their ditching and all of this right down through here. Yeah, it's right up against their fence line, so, yeah. So if you, looking at the, at the landscape plan, just a few of the highlights that are there. You can see there's 24 townhouse units. There's four garden homes, which are down at the, at the bottom, backing onto Simpson Drive. So that's a total of 28 dwelling units in the first phase for this ground access units. And then it says that two condominium sites will be a further development permit on its own late this year. We're in design right now on it, so. There's a play area for the kids down in that far bottom corner there. And then, of course, Lakeside Drive, you'll see where it's had the calming put to it. You see the, that's how that's been done with landscaped out. And there's two trees for every unit. So it's heavily, heavily treed. And we have incorporated that, if you're looking down where it, wherever the landscaping meets either Cedar Street or Simpson Street, that fence line, those trees are right on the property line and the fencing goes in around them so that they actually create a streetscape of landscape trees, that they're not behind the fence. They're actually in view, public-wise. So it should look very pretty. There's actually on the, one of our drawings, there's a bit of a rendering of some stuff that's existing. We may run into that as we go. So let's see what we got next there, Sarah. So there's just a summary. Not much to note in there other than, you know, the address, lot coverage is very low. Maximum was 5,500 square meters and we're using 2,700, 24%. Which goes back to what I was telling you earlier. Building height is 14 meters and we're only going up 13. And parking stalls, we were added, required 46 and we're supplying 92. So that's sort of the knots of the sort of requirements. So.
Sorry, Mike.
Yep.
You're required 46 and you're providing 92?
Yes.
Why are you going for 92?
Well, every, every home has a double car garage and every home has two cars in their driveway. And that all came about, it's again, it's the lower densification on the site pulls the buildings farther apart. We have view corridors all the way down the site that are over about 60 feet in width now. So no matter where you're walking on the site, you'll be looking straight down and always have an opportunity to see the water and the mountains from anywhere on the site.
Right.
Very easily. Whereas a design that would maybe put a rural buildings along Lakeside Drive, so all those people could see, sit and look at the water. All it did was block the rest of the site off from everything when you drive by. And not only that, when you're driving down Lakeside Drive now, you'll be able to look into the project as well, right? And it's again, all street-lined streets or tree-lined streets and, and within a few years should look very lovely. So it's, it's again, that relationship between the site and the community and the waterfront and the road and all that, that we didn't want any barriers in, so lots of windows, so.
So can I just clarify then, so visitor parking is accommodated basically on the person's townhome, right?
Exactly, yeah. Every, everyone can, if you've got more than that many friends, yeah.
No.
It's going for my own personal life. That's too many.
Mark, go ahead.
He has, Keith has his hand up first.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's so far a lovely project and I appreciate all the values going into it. But I would just, you know, looking at the nine parking stalls that might abutress the left-hand side there. That would be a continuation of those walking facilities. If I'm a mother with a stroller trying to get to the water, does seem like a place we want to consider how that looks as people are coming, funding off of Cedar, coming in off of Front Street, however that may be, or going back and forth. Because it is a little bit, it can be quite jarring to be brought onto a parking facility. And there is, you know, we're seeing that within the stats, there's quite a lot of places for cars within that. So that would be my first critical opinion is.
I think it's an excellent comment and certainly have no problem with it. And if we could leave this meeting with these kind of comments and our people making notes of that, that when we do incorporate a sidewalk and we ask for forgiveness on a couple parking stalls, that hopefully it's not a much change, council, in the fall. When we come back to you, that we say, these are the reasons why things were done. And we may be now a couple stalls short on our requirement for our marina. So right now we meet, we have no variances. But your point is excellent and I concur that sidewalk would be much nicer through there.
So if I may, supplemental, so is that where we're reaching for that higher number for parking right now? Is that envisioning of the marina needing it later?
Well, it was, it was a just, it was a condition in the zoning that X amount of stalls were for X amount of slips. So it's just a math formula.
Right.
But, yeah.
So this is the pre-planning for that, okay?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, the, it is zoned for the marina at this time and it requires a certain amount of parking. And that's, you know, they're trying to meet our current regs. So if council wants to relax some of those, then certainly, yeah, we can look at that. I'm pretty certain our planning staff is gonna require a sidewalk there, one way or the other. So we're gonna have to figure out how to make it all, all work and we'll work with, with Mike on how we accomplish that. But, yeah, we will clearly want a sidewalk as through this, you know, on this public street.
I concur totally.
And Mike, to, to sort of build on that theme, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at Nelson next? Our, our sort of future, primary future planning document that we have right now in addition to the OCP?
No.
Okay, well, I'll just recommend you have a look at it. It's a great document, put a lot of work into it and it really represents the vision of the city over the next 30 years. And I think your project, you know, being so large and, and it's such so prominent really would benefit from having a look at that, that document. One of the things that we look for, we're stressing, that we need to reach for as a community is more active transportation. And one of the things we've been talking about and looking at is how do we deal with reducing the number of vehicles that are moving through the city so that active transportation, the walking and the biking is easier and safer? And I think, you know, transit is also a part of that. And so you do have buses that move through, like, right down Cedar and right through the mall. And in creating a development that supports those values, I think, and I think you're, you're getting there for sure. But the sidewalk would be great to add there. Consideration of what the bus transit access opportunities are would be great. And then even, I think you would, you know, not to foreshadow too much, but I think you'd probably have an open-minded council to relaxing some of those parking requirements so that you do prioritize some of those other values. So.
In our, in our development, we have created bikes in each, each unit. We've created electric car charging stations in every unit. And so we're, we're advanced in all of that kind of technology that we can bring. And just because we supply four cars for every, parking for four cars, doesn't necessarily mean you have to all use them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be early in concrete. And they're gonna be like everyone else. Your garage gets full of stuff.
Yeah, unfortunately we have a strata here that when we, when we craft that document, there'll be some pretty stringent rules about parking RVs on them driveways and, and things like that. So, yeah, that document's yet to come.
And just a follow-up on the, on the marina. Is, is it still that the marina has some requirements in our?
We'll get to the marina here in a second. Thanks, Sarah. So here is a typical, this is our three-plex, which is right here. Then we have a four-plex, a four-plex and a four-plex, five-plex and a four-plex. So again, broken up, so if you went back to the landscape plan, you'd see there's walkways all the way through from the, from the public to get through the entire site, easy. But there, that three-plex is, is the first, is one of the first little blocks. And we'll just show that. I think, Sarah, if we move forward, we can, you'd see the front, you'd see the back of it onto Cedar Street there. And again, all the trees. And then this last one, it shows the rooftop patios on each unit that has a rooftop patio up top. So you can see the three separate units in that particular block. Lots of windows facing the lake, looking across, so, yeah. And then the next slide is that same unit at night and we, we highlight that night view because it's all downlit. So there's no lighting shining up into the sky. Everything is low lights all the way through the whole development. I think it looks beautiful, yeah. Okay, so the garden homes now, so those are the townhomes. Those are main floor parking, flex area, bike storage. Upstairs to the second floor is, is your main living area. Third floor is all your bedrooms and your fourth floor is your rooftop patio. These are the garden homes and these are built for clients that would be, people that don't want stairs. There'd be more people our age, my age. Master bedroom's on the main floor here. They're about 2,400 square feet, so they're not, 2,500 square feet, so they're not a bad move down from coming out of a home. There's no rooftop patios or anything on them. It's just a big rancher, main floor, master bedroom, ensuite and two bedrooms, a bath and a loft upstairs. Grandkids, kids, whoever come to visit upstairs. So that's all main floor living in there. And again, at night, going down by the site or looking down Simpson Drive, it's all low lit. Nothing shining up into, actually, that's the real picture of, I forget the name of the, what's your park up there with the flagpole in it?
Gyro.
Gyro Park, yeah. Right, you can see the flagpole in that picture there. So, yeah, so if you're up at Gyro Park and looking down, you're not getting light shining up at you and things like that. So I think they've done a beautiful job. There's only four of those units in the site. So, but again, it's four, we've already had numerous calls on, on those, so, yeah. Be nice to do more, but they take up quite a bit of room. And now, the next slide is, okay, so is our marina. We, you know, the site was originally approved for the 60-slip marina, which, which we've just encompassed all of that. Again, there's 60 slips in this one. There's a platform, you'll see in the corner there, which is for kayaks, paddle boards, any of those kind of paddling equipment and there. And then the next, so the next picture, this one here shows the basis of the marina. And you'll notice that the outside edge, which we'll call it the breakwater edge for lack of terminology, and then down the other side is free, well, not free, but it's available for random boat. So visitors from across the lake, the regional district has talked to me, the canoe and the paddle club has talked to me that they need some places to be able to tie up and do that. So these modern marinas now, they would have, you can see that in Colona, right at the foot of Bernard, is actually a perfect example of it. They're all metered parking. So if you want, you just tie up and you can do that and you just use the hang tag. There's no meters and nothing. It's all, all done and you can tie your boat up and just pay like you do in your car and away you go. So then.
Is that revenue hours or yours, Mike? Is that meter revenue hours or yours?
So this is, this is where. So you see the, you see this, this, we don't have very good graphics yet because we haven't really developed this until we sort of get the feedback from the city. But that's a public wharf, public walkway and then ramp down. And, and even on that little walkway that's still on piles until you get out to the deeper water where it will float, there's little, little nooks to, we might even have, Sarah, we might even have a photo, maybe, yeah, there you go. You see, there's little people places which are three or four feet deep and about 12 feet in length, I think, for either a bench or for some little kid to hang a fishing line over, do whatever. But that's all public. And there will be some security down on the bottom, but it won't be a locked-off pier. It'll be open to the public. And then on that deck area that you saw is where we would propose to put in a that deck area is about 10,000 square feet and it would probably house a 5,000 square foot, a little bar, restaurant, rental facility for paddle boards and different things like that, outdoor patio and seating. I don't know if you've ever been to the, I think it's the Flying, the Hooded Merganser down in Panticton at the hotel there? That type of a facility?
That's very nice though.
Yeah, it's, it's just, they're just, and you get a real relationship with the water and the marina and things like that. So that, if we get the, the go-ahead and approval for that, when we come back with our condominium development permit, we will also then have the opportunity to share what that would look like as well. And we'll advance the marina fairly quickly. It would take probably about almost two years to get all the provincial approvals and then, then they give you a window to put it in. Uh and then it then they give you a window to put it in, so it'll probably be there in within three years, we would think. We think this whole project will be a four year project uh to for us to to do that. Um but we've hired mass engineering from Nelson here to stick handle that approval for us. And we've been dealing with landmark, uh the people that build docks out of salmon arm. Build a beautiful dock, all the stuff in the shoe swaps is all built by them and uh. I tour their facility and their product is just first class, so yeah, it'd be really great. So we're kind of excited about it.
Mike, if you probably, if you had came here with this a year ago, we wouldn't have bothered doing the pier.
Gee, you're reading my mind, mayor. Could have been an investor.
Yeah.
Mike, you're drawing here um of the the dock in the in the in the. Marina is different from how it's placed on the um on the the first set of drawings.
Oh, the landscape drawing, oh yeah, no, no, don't, don't, the landscape are are landscape architects and artistes. No, so he he knew there was a Marina there, we had no idea what it, there there was not a coordinated effort to say, can you get that on there and do that, those are. Those are yet to come, there's a lot more of the um conversation to have and how we all wanna see Lakeside Drive. Developed and landscape, we have a, we have a very nice concept through. Through from Cedar Street all the way to there, but we're not saying that that's set in stone sitting here tonight, yeah. Are are, we have.
Lots more work to do.
I think it's important to consider, as mentioned in the body of the report, that we're still going through development permits permitting station, we're still reviewing all of this. And I think at this point in time, it was an opportunity for Mike to present your raw concept to the community. I think all the details around the sidewalk, around landscaping and all that, we're gonna be looking at that through development per- permitting. So um trust, trust that we're reviewing this through the process and through all of our bylaws and um. We were having, we have a good working relationship with Mike and his group to uh, yeah, meet all those criteria.
Master page.
So on that note, uh the question I have kind of forming here is. Is around that phase two and those condominiums and and where that project goes, so we have. Uh we we haven't ex- we haven't taken all the opportunity for density on this particular lot. Which means less units, but they're beautiful units, there's a place for that obviously in town. As the condominiums go in, um. How many units are we, are you guys thinking are gonna be possible there? What kind of uh affordability components will be worked into there, if any? I know you guys have obviously been very busy with some of the apartments around town and and I know there's good work there, but but is this another opportunity to continue to push forward? Uh on that huge gap that exists within town?
Ab- absolutely. So let me ta- tell you sort of where we are now, okay, which is pretty wide open, but we. We have developed that, if you go back to this, to be two buildings. On a single underground parcade on the on below. And then on the main floor, so level, so the this thi- this drawing here is showing that. The single access to the parcade is underground is here and then it gets to here and splits and goes into into each one. These entrances here are because there's some parking on the main floor as well, as well as some limited commercial. Okay, and we will put in commercial on a pre-sale only, we have twenty six hundred square feet committed down and. This area here, but they haven't signed yet, so you know, that's could be, who knows, and I don't wanna say who that is yet. But we will tell you that on this end, we're going to be, we've already committed, cause we're gonna do it and then it'll be a strata unit. There will be a coffee bar, maybe a little wine bar patio kind of thing and it sort of shows on our landscape plan. Uh you know, a little better there, that that far end. Uh again, but some sort of public uh gathering with. Food and beverages of some sort, um coffee, whatever there. Then when you go up on the the next deck, so now you're on the second floor, which is the first floor residential. How many units are we gonna get in there on both of them? That's gonna be entirely driven, and I hate to go back to saying this, because it's gonna be driven by parking. And how many parking stalls can we put in there and how many units do we and how do we allocate them, et cetera, et cetera? You buy a top floor penthouse, you're gonna get two stalls. Okay, um and now whether that's one dedicated stall and one opportunity to buy another one, we don't know that yet, we're still working through that detail. So when we originally pitched this, we had forty five. Condominium units in each of those little blocks, so ninety. I'm gonna tell you right now, we're not gonna get ninety for that very reason. We'll probably get eighty, so maybe forty in each one. They will vary in size and price from four hundred square feet to one point two million. Uh depending on where you are in the building and you know, et cetera, et cetera. The affordability, we'll have units, well, what is affordability these days really when I, you know, I've been around a long time and geez. Uh don't get me going, but okay, so let's say affordability is, you know, does three hundred and forty thousand dollars sound affordable these days? Well, it is unless you're trying to raise three hundred and forty grand to buy something. But they'll, that's about where they'll start, you'll get a what we call uh a a micro unit for three hundred and under three hundred and fifty thousand. And they will be driven by square footage all the way to the top. Um so there, you can pick a number that you're comfortable with and we could probably supply your unit in there somewhere. Depending on the face and obviously the ones on the far end, facing the lake. Are gonna drive a lot more money than the ones at the far end doing it, so we sort of subsidize our own self within the building, but. Um that's a, that's about where we are today in there, so a good cross section on pricing, good cross section on sizing. Uh and affordability is, you know, if, yeah, three hundred and change. For the micro unit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Supplemental?
Oh yeah, go ahead.
So moving into the kind of the 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 policy piece when it comes to the development of the strata. Uh have you guys been putting some consideration on whether or not things like providing these units out as rentals will be an option? Or is the, is the strata gonna be geared more towards those buildings being owner occupied?
Well, they will all be owner occupied, everything on here will be owner occupied, whether you buy one and rent it is up, is is your call. Uh so, but you'll own the unit. Um it's and of course, people have always asked, what about Airbnbs and things like that? Well, stratas and Airbnbs don't usually get along that well, plus there's a whole process, I understand now. On permitting and how many you can have within an area and and all of that kind of stuff, so um. You know, when we do our disclosure document, which will be done in the next couple of months. Um we have to wait for a development permit and or a our building permit, can't get our building permit. Natalie and I were talking today until we get our, whatever, we're still missing our uh sho- uh appliance. We're still waiting for that, that comes from the province. And you know, they they don't, they they tell us it could be a number of months before we get that yet, so. We can't do a disclosure, we can't sell anything for until we get that, so we're we're moving forward and yeah, we got a pile guy that's loading up. Pipe and things like that, getting ready to go here in sixty days, so. Well, by the way, this is happening. Um so it's gonna be, it's it it should all work out, but um. Yeah, just, I don't know. If the strata will be. And that's, well, and that's why, that's it, it's really good questions, because that's why we're subdividing this off. From the two, that's why we're making two, so we're subdividing it right here, you'll get that subdivision coming through here sometime. When when I guess it's ready to come, because it's just for that reason. Even though this is an entire strata, it's gonna be, these guys will have their own strata and these guys will have their own strata. Because they're both very different stratas, you know, these people will uh wanna know who's mowing the lawn and there's some insurance and. How big is your dog, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, where these guys, they've got elevators and and. All kinds of mechanical contracts to deal with and things of that, we're in the with with a townhome, you don't, you you're on your own, right? So other than the exterior of the building and maintenance and insurance and things like that, it's, you know, snow plowing and that, so. But they will work harmoniously together, uh the two stratas, because they'll they'll have common property things, but. Very different once you get inside the building, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, go ahead. Um can you comment on, you know, we have utilities running through that site, do you wanna comment on the plan for that?
Um well, the utilities are staying.
Yeah.
Uh works is asked to us to give them a couple meter uh widening of their utility. And we said we would do that, this, I don't have a drawing that shows that utility corridor on there. But it's it's a pinch point, so it comes right through here and then here.
Yeah, it's.
And it's pretty good, we can.
So it's on our, it's on our computers, sir, if you look on this document on your computer, you'll see it.
Yeah.
It's by Simpson, close to Simpson Road.
Yeah, it's it's, but we are good to give you a couple more meters. Even, this was, we had to adjust this building right here, this corner to get to get you two more meters here.
And that's, that's why that road is where it is, right?
And that's why the road is where it is, absolutely, so so yeah, so we're um with. As long as we survey it all in the right spot, we, when we build it, we should be able to give you the two meters that you're looking for. And as well as they've, we've carved off that uh section of Simpson Road and uh um. Put that in on the table as well for you, so remember that when we're talking about Marina.
And can you um speak to um building on, you know, it's a brownfield site.
Sorry?
I said it, it it's a former brownfield site, or is a brownfield site and can you just speak to, I just heard you say pilings and.
Yes, this, it it's it's a, it's actually a clean site, really, you know, when you consider it, it really is, it's got a, it's got sawdust down a. About. Oh fifteen feet. And in some areas, it's a meter thick and others, it's a couple meters thick. So so it was, it was a real toss up, whether just to dig it all out and and then put new materials in and everything else, but. You know, when you have a brownfield and we've learned this from the past, that the minute you open it up, it 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 attracts a lot of attention. And it ret- from a lot of people and everyone has opinions and everyone needs things that, so driving piles is just the. Is is cleaner, quicker, smoother, maybe not more economical, but close um to do that, so, yeah.
So yeah, just to I identify, you know, like these buildings have to be built on piles, which that that's not like. Building in, you know, a greenfield site where you can, you know, put in your normal basement and and all that stuff.
Absolutely, everything in downtown Kelowna is built on piles, you know, that's for the same reason, different, different ground conditions, but for the very same reason. Yeah, and our piles are about twenty meters deep.
Right.
Before we get the the resistance, so yeah.
Rick, go go ahead. Uh does it, so on the garage, on the on the forty forty condo units in the buildings. You're going down to put in the parking garage, you're the piling, you're still using the pilings, they're just.
Pilings are still, there's still, you we go down and then the piles go in, yeah, and they go under every column. That's that's in the in the parcade, when you know, when you're going through a parcade and you s- that's so, it's all, yeah, it it's, they go in and then. And that lower parcade will only be in the ground about eight feet, from the existing grade there now, about eight feet. And so I think that that total height of that parcade in there probably only might only be nine feet clear, which is lots. Uh the the next one will be twelve, because all of the mechanical has to be in the second level because it, because of the flood plain. So so there's nothing down there but your car, um yeah.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense then.
Master page.
Okay, I was probably getting close to the end of my curiosities, but uh that's why, that is why we're here.
Have your own meeting maybe.
Yep, we can have our own meeting, um just in the discussion of like. You obviously brought up Nelson next, as always expected, a- and that's great, but. I'm wondering what the step code ambition is going to be for the townhouses and garden homes. Uh the the bigger building will obviously have to meet a different standard already and then the kind of just the follow up baked in there is. Obviously Nelson has done some amazing work around embedded carbon and building material uh in, which was in. One of our more re- more recent meetings, uh but we've led the charge in front of some of the bigger municipalities, understanding. What kind of natural materials can go into uh into a building and still achieve high energy uh cons- conservation value, so. Uh that is kind of my crux of when the we think of the energy profile and and energy use of these particular buildings and the material of. Materials that'll go into them, have you guys taken a look at some of that work to?
Oh yeah, oh no, we're we're all over that, um uh step code three. Um will be, we we've been building step code three for about five years now, uh you know, Paul Street was step code three. Um as far as the energy modeling, that hasn't been done yet, but will be. Uh we'll supply the reports with our building permits and things like that, um. Gas, heat, electric hot water. Um all LED lighting everywhere, so. You know, um I I wouldn't wanna sit here and say that we're going lead gold or or anything, we've tried that, done that and failed miserably at trying to. Count up our points. We achieved it, but it was a terrible experience, um but. We will be using the most efficient, high efficiency stuff that we can. Get it and still supply a product that will be as close to the. Top of the heap as we can get it and still be economically viable, so there might be. An insulation that we don't use because it's twice as much as one that we would use and still achieve step code three. And that's just to throw it out there example, I'm talking out of the side of my head, but you know, so we'll, we do whatever we can and.
So again, our staff work closely with with uh Mike and his staff on, you know, the. Information we've done, we're we're currently, um as you know, uh developing the, you know, we've developed the. Product list of and working with our development community to ensure those, we can find cost effective. Um you know, materials that they're available, et cetera, so um you know, we'll.
Yeah, a couple things, a couple things we do, we sh- we sh- we achieve all of the rebate programs that. You know, Fortis has and things like that, so you know, Energy Star, everything, you know, so.
I think with always, what I always think is really great about the work in the embedded carbon space specifically, when you move, when you uh chase those step three and step four. Levels is is the the discovery and the ability to use some of those natural products that are actually a little bit more locally manufactured in Western Canada. Uh to achieve goals that we would generally intuitively think are going to be, you know, more expensive products. And actually aren't always when it comes down to.
No, actually, you're you're right, absolutely, sometimes they're very comparable and I think that's what our energy modeling guys do and that, but. You know, you look where passive housing and step and step four is, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there, but we're not far off.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
I mean, we don't wanna have a little window facing the lake.
Sounds like staff will. Mike, put the pressure on later.
And Mike, we're ping ponging.
Sorry.
Just a, just a quick, you, I caught you say um um gas, heat, I'm wondering if you could uh take a look at. At heat pumps, particularly given, you know, the thirty seven degree days that we're having this week. You know, the benefit of a heat pump is that it does the cooling as well and.
Oh yeah, we're we're on, we're on that, um whether we're, we're actually Thursday meeting our uh mechanical engineers and. And doing that, we're using Delta T out of Kelowna, they're very highly regarded in in the industry for that, for the design. Um yeah, but but they are heated and air conditioned, that's the whole concept of the gas fired heating appliances because. Um it it will give us both the air conditioning and and the heat source, now where the. Where the air exchange, or and the, not the air exchange, but the heat pumps come in. You might end up having to put supplement heat in there. So then you'd have backup baseboard, electric, air, you know, and stuff like that, so if you're just chasing air conditioning. Then there's probably more efficient ways of getting better air conditioning, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, our staff will, you'll have those discussions, yeah. We'll, we'll try to convince you.
Yeah, I I know. I I I don't wanna, like, I know planning is gonna be all of this, but I just, I just was thinking about the. The walkability from the Orange Bridge all along, and that this section right now is not great. Uh it's hot, it's um it's a, it's a section that could be improved, so. I I I was looking at your drawing, I see you, you know, you're working on that, but just really like keeping that in mind of like. That whole waterfront area of Nelson's, you know, we're trying to create that that walkability from. From the airport area all the way over to the Orange Bridge, and this could be an excellent section of improvement, and I see you, you know, you're doing that, so. It's great.
Well, we've had that, we've had that preliminary conversations on that with Seb and that and. We even to the point where we may, whatever we do across that front there and tie it in, so it will tie in. Will, and of course, we only go as far as our property.
Of course, uh of course.
You know, so, so we'll get to that end where we meet the Walmart parking lot and then we will transfer across there. And we'll do the very same thing down at this, at the other end there, right there, right, see? So somewhere where our landscape architect's drawing in the marina, which has got about eight boats in it. Um there will, that will all transfer, and that's why that wharf, when you looked at that marina plan, that that wharf. Has to tie in on that side too, right, so that'll make a big, big opportunity to take a big chunk of that. Rough streetscape and tweak it up a little bit.
Thank you, Councilor Charlie.
Thanks for the presentation, curious. I'm curious more about, more about the marina and this extra extension with the potential. Restaurant on it and all, what does that planning look like? How will that decision get made in your mind?
Well, we need from you a forshore lease. And then it would go into the planning department, just like anything else, it would be. A development permit, I would suspect upon its own.
Out in the water like that, we have full. So it is fully our decision, we don't need to, it's not something the province weighs in on or. Feds, I mean, yeah.
The province will weigh on in on the decision for the lease and Mike will have to include that restaurant in the lease agreement. Um and then planning will look at design and zoning and that kinda thing.
Uh would we be considering yea or nay on that part, or it's just gonna be presented? Do you know what I mean? Like, there there's, this is quite a bit of development out into the water. For, associated with that piece of land.
This property has has uh zoning for a marina presently. Needs the current zoning and it wouldn't come back to council, if it doesn't meet the zoning then.
Yeah, thanks David, it's it's a takeoff from the original one that was done twenty years ago. And and actually, that that development they had, although it was very massive, was was quite nice, you know, from a perspective. Nothing was ever done any further than the pretty pictures, but uh you know, they it 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 had an awful lot going on there. A lot of density, I think there was five hundred units or something down there, uh yeah, but it was, it was a nice, nice looking project, you know, in its own right.
And I think, you know, being down on that waterfront, um if you recognize how far you do have to get out there to. That's why that marina extends out.
Yeah.
It's pretty shallow, you mean? So I just see the whole thing just getting really out there.
It's not that big, really, it sounds like it is, but the, but the pier goes out a couple hundred feet.
Yeah.
You know, to get, well, I don't know what you guys are doing at the, at your one you're doing now, but you know, if you look at the um. You see, you gotta remember that we're behind the prestige, right, so the prestige is filled in. A hundred or a couple hundred feet of it, so their their little run is pretty short. Where we're coming right from the street and going out, and I've got pictures of it just a month or so ago. It's just with sand right out virtually and and you can't put anything in under four feet of water. I think that four feet is the minimum that you have to have before you can float anything for the fishes and things, so, yeah. So yeah, it sounds big, but it's scale wise, it's when you go down there, not that big at all.
I think as, as being out in the waterfront, it's not much different than the current.
No, when the, when you get to the where this floats. Um it's, it's pretty much right across from the prestige, cause they're under the same rule, they needed to be out that far. Cause that's where it drops off, and so the drop off is the same, they just filled theirs in, so, yeah. Well, if that's it, thanks for having me. I very much appreciate it, we're pretty excited about what's going on and we'll uh, we've got lots of work ahead of us. Natalie, Dwyane, Seb to get this thing punched through, but uh we're, we're well on our way, so, yeah.
Thank you very much, that property.
Four years from now, we'll have a cocktail on that dock, I promise you that.
Thanks very much, Mike.
Okay.
Empty that property for a long time, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, for sure. It's gonna happen, that's great.
And I think the other thing is just recognizing, you know, um you know, the building that he built on. Front and Hall Street and Hall Street Place, it's a beautiful building and a great addition to our community and. Found a great partner in Nelson Cars and DC Housing and.
Yeah, thank you, we get more compliments on that building, people still phone and. And say they were going through town and heard we did that and just wanted to say what, how great it looks sitting on that corner, yeah. Fill the corner in nice, and that was supposed to have been a condominium project, right, so.
There's a pattern here. There's a pattern.
No, I've already had a phone call from the government to see if there was any opportunity, I said, no, no, not at all, no, you're done.
I I did wanna thank you for, I mean, I mean, you you know, you're you're a developer, this is what you do, but you brought, you brought a level of. Affordability and housing that was really needed in the Hall Street project for for our town, so.
Three of them here, right, so yeah, no, that's, that's awesome, yeah, no, don't thank me, the societies are the ones that uh do the heavy lifting. We're just the guys that bang it together, but yeah.
It's all, but it's all a team effort.
Yeah, it it is, for sure, yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Can I be released?
And uh don't take any helicopter rides with this guy. Okay, I think that's about it for agenda folks, so uh most and no late items, I don't think, most adjourned.
No council reports.
All in favor?
Do we have a council report?
Okay, council reports, okay.
Oh, I didn't say I had one, I just asked.
All in favor? Thank you very much, thanks very much, you guys for sticking around.
Thank you.
Tonight. Thanks, Custon, we'll see ya.
Next one, yeah.